Hi, welcome everyone. Morning. Thank you so much for tuning in on this Wednesday and for really taking an interest in our diversity, equity, and inclusion work that's being done throughout our system. We have, A, there's been some large segments within the CCC system, and they're actually going to provide you with updates on their organization's efforts, why this work is so important, and also some of the advice for you all in implementing DEI on your campus. This issue, the issue is DEI will always be an issue, right? We're always going to be striving to be a more equitable system. Because the fact is, we live in an imperfect world. Right now, most importantly, the work is needed. There's so much racial unrest. There's been a huge shift in focus to social justice. But there are still some that are out there that oppose the work that's being done, or are really in denial that even systemic racism exists. For example, September 22nd, President Donald Trump issued an executive order that literally stated that any anti-racism work, or any DEI work being done in an organization is actually anti-American. So in regards to DEI work, the executive order actually reads, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it for you right now. It says, "Many people are pushing a different vision of America that is grounded in hierarchies based on collective social and political identities, rather than in the inherent and equal dignity of every person as an individual. Theology is rooted in the pernicious and false belief that America is an irredeemably racist and sexist country, that some people simply on account of their race or sex are oppressors, and that racial and true identities are more important than our common status as human beings and Americans." And I think that stably just shows the inherent need for more DEI in this country, for more diversity, equity, and inclusion work that needs to be done throughout our system. I want to introduce you today to some panelists. We also have someone who's really leading the charge here in our California Community College System with their call to action, with the DEI work group, and that's actually our very own Chancellor Elo Oakley. So Chancellor Oakley, I'd love to turn the floor over to you right now and give you a time to really open up this meeting.
Oh, thank you, Stephen. Thank you for doing this. Thank you to your entire team at the SSCCC. You really make us all proud to serve the students in the California Community Colleges, because this is really about you. I mean, this work, this topic is all about our future. And you, the SSCCC, and the students that you represent are our future. So let me begin and just lay a little bit of context and make some attempts to thank some folks. But first, as you were, Stephen, this topic is always a topic of discussion. It has been for decades. But we are in this moment in time, in 2020, where this topic needs to be front and center. This is our priority. This is our urgent call to action. We cannot allow ourselves to leave this moment behind as we have in decades past. This moment, this year 2020, has called to us, has called us to this moment, and challenged us to do something very differently for the future of our state and for our country, and of course, for our students. So we must take the responsibility and the accountability for our role in where we're at and what we can do as a system of educators to change the trajectory of the lives and the experiences of our students. That is what this is all about. Us as educators, us as members of communities, taking individual responsibility and making individual action happen while working collectively to make a huge difference in the trajectory of our future. I know that you began this conversation quoting what President Trump and his administration have said about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I can tell you without any hesitation that we are going to continue this work with greater urgency, based on, listen to its words. We're going to go after this greater urgent because we have so much work to do. I'm pleased that the incoming administration will be much more understanding, supportive of this work, so I'm forward to that. But let me be clear, regardless of the current president's thoughts about diversity, equity, and inclusion, regardless of the failure of Proposition 16. This work began well before all that happened, well before Proposition 16. This work continues in earnest well after this election cycle. Our work is not dependent on either of those two things. So I want to be clear with everyone who's tuning in, everyone who's listening to this webinar, that we must show the same courage as a system of educators as our students are demonstrating. Our students, the SSCCC, have taken this issue and made some courageous steps forward. They have issued their own plan, their own recommendations, and we must take time to hear them. The student voice is more critical than ever in this moment in time. Diversity, equity, and inclusion cannot happen without their voice squarely at the table and us listening to the challenges that they face and the recommendations they have for us. This is their future. And so I want to thank the SSCCC for the work that you've been doing. I know that you've been asking us to hear your voice. I know you've been asking us to listen about what you think needs to happen with diversity, equity, and inclusion, particularly when it comes to hiring. I know the system, and I'm saying that my office, along with the leadership of all the organizations represented here today, are fully invested in diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we hear you. We hear you when you say that it's important to have students at the table when we're hiring, when we're talking about policy and practice. So we need, as a system, to continue to find ways to ensure that the student voice is there whenever we make these decisions, and it'll make us a much better system. So again, I want to thank all of your panelists who are here today. They represent organizations that I'm very proud to represent as the chancellor. This work is being done. We've made, but we have a lot more to go. So I hope everyone who's here, listening in, joins with the SSCCC, commits to working with one another to make significant progress, not in the next few years, but in the next few days, the next few weeks, and certainly the next few months. We cannot wait for several more years for this work to be implemented. This work needs to begin to be implemented today, right after this webinar. So again, thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Catherine, for your work. And I will turn it over back to you so that we can hear from our amazing panelists. Thank you all for tuning in.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Oakley. You're so right. This work really needs to be front and center right now. And everyone has their own weight to pull, right? Students, our classified staff, our faculty, our administration, our trustees. And I'm so happy that we have some of them on this call now. So I want to introduce our distinguished panelists who are leading their charge in their respective segments of our higher education system. So today, we have Adrian Gray, who is the CCCT Board President. Thank you so much for being here. Pamela Lester, who is the CEO, CCC Board President. We also have the Student Senate's very own Catherine Squire, who is the Vice President for the Student Senate. And we have John Stanskus, who is the academics at CCC Past President. So thank you to all our panelists for being here today. I'm going to go over a little bit of the format, how we're gonna run this town hall. Each panelist is going to have an opportunity to provide a two- to three-minute introduction of what their organization is really doing to address the chancellor's office call to action. And then that will be followed by a series of questions that my school will moderate. And then we'll open up the forum to a question and answer from the audience. And audience, as questions arise, please type those into the chat for us, as we do not have an option to unmute your microphone. So if you have any questions, please put those in the chat. And thank you so much for being here today. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna just jump right in. Let's start it off. And my first question is what I stated earlier. Just provide an update for us on the activities that your organization has been doing to further diversity, equity, and inclusion work. So I'll start with Adrian Gray.
Thank you, Stephen, and good morning, everyone. I'm Adrian Gray. So as the president of the CCCT, as we call it, which is the trustee board of the state, and it's one of two boards that are part of the, that are responsible for the California Community College League, the other board being the CEO board, board that Pam Lester is president of. We were involved already in DEI earlier in the year, before this urgent focus, because we had members of CCCT who were sitting on the DEI Integration Implementation Task Force at the state level, and even before that. And of course, we've all been working toward the vision for success. And, but Labor Day weekend, or rather Memorial Day weekend of 2020 really hit everyone hard. The tragic events around the murder of George Floyd brought into focus the just unbearable systemic racial equity problem in this country. And, and so all of our work became accelerated. And we were already doing weekly webinars and with some diversity, equity, and inclusion content, but we ramped that up. We really turned our focus to, to DEI. And we recruited the group of trustees and others, including, including some students who are on our four work groups that are preparing recommendations for trustees and boards around the state on how to implement DEI. So we're working hard to put together best practices and, and working with the other associations, the faculty, the HR professionals, the CIOs. There's a number of associations that all participate to operate the community college system that are, that are working to implement these DEI integration strategies that came out of the chancellor's office. So, and we're continuing to have dialogue for trustees who may not be ready. There, as Stephen was talking about, not every trustee feels as comfortable talking about these issues. And we want to make it so that trustees do feel that level of comfort, that they do feel that ownership on their boards to speak out about diversity, to use their power. We are, we are the creators of policy in our districts. We are the, we are the ones that employ and manage the CEO or superintendent of the districts. And we want to make sure that, that we use that influence and power to bring DEI front and center throughout the state.
Thank you so much, President Gray. And yeah, the CCCT Board is the California Community College Trustee Board, right? Correct? Awesome. And I will pass it over to President Lester.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for the invitation to be here today. I am the proud president of San Diego Mesa College and this year, the elected president of the Chief Executive Officers of California Community Colleges Board. What a year to be in leadership, right? What a year to be in statewide leadership, where we have the opportunity to have someone like Chancellor Oakley give us a call to action, and then someone like our Deputy Chancellor Daisy Gonzalez, just absolutely providing the wind beneath our wings organizationally to get out to all of our groups to take this call to action and implement it. And so I'm happy to say that the CEO Board, along with the Board of the CCCT, the trustees, the first thing that Adrian and I did together was we set common goals around racial equity, so that both of our boards have picked that point on the horizon of racial equity. Our three primary goals this year are looking at systems that mitigate racial equity, more resources for our system, and then resources as we build back from COVID and trying to make whole our institutions again. We have a wonderful DEI task force of our board led ably by Rowena Tomannang, Ed Bush, and Martha Garcia. They are tremendous leaders. And when we put out the call, we had more people than we knew what to do with to volunteer for this work. They have started the work again in earnest. They have set goals that are using the rubric that was set out by the chancellor's office. And by, one by one, we are going to make our way through that rubric. We know that as the presidents, superintendents, and chancellors of our districts, along with our boards of trustees, that we hold a tremendous amount of privilege and power. And we need to put it to work. We need to be able to look at these systemic systems that have prevented us from doing this work. You know, we've been doing this DEI work long before there was a 209, or a 16, or any other number that people in California want to throw at us. We're going to continue to march forward. I think faced with the challenges that are ahead in terms of, you know, just resources and those kinds of things, you know, you never want to waste an emergency. You never want to waste the kind of passion and commitment that you can find in people when, when you can create these kinds of conditions. And it's really exciting for us right now. I know on all of our campuses, we've taken up the call to action, and I'm excited to see what comes of it. But I know that we've got some tough times ahead, but that doesn't mean that our laser focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion won't be at the top of our list. So again, thanks for having me here today. I'm proud to represent the wonderful, hardworking, equity-minded CEOs of the state of California Community Colleges.
Thank you so much, President Lester, and thank you for answering that call and to all the CEOs that are out there that are really responding. Now, I know what the SSCCC is doing, but Vice President Squire, can you please inform our distinguished guests here what the SSCCC is doing in DEI work?
Definitely. Thank you. So since the chancellor's call to action came out, we knew we wanted to take immediate action. So we started with creating some new internal structures within our organization to really get the ball rolling. And so from that stemmed a new Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee that I've been heading up, as well as our new Institutional Success for People of Color Task Force, which Stephen has been working very closely with. Shortly after those new structures were created, we ran a series of town halls to hear from our students of color, to hear about the struggles that they were going through amidst the murder of George Floyd, amidst the murder of countless other Black lives, and just to hear their stories. From those town halls, we stemmed an anti-racism student plan of action, which we have been aggressively advocating for our colleges to implement on their campuses. And then one of the biggest wins yet, we've actually had a lot of those recommendations integrated into the chancellor's DEI Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Master Plan. And so we've really taken those that have just become, you know, just stemmed from student priorities and made them statewide priorities for our system partners. We wanted our system partners to get on board and help us lead that work. To follow along with that, we have had, we taken up opportunities to provide professional development to our students in areas of DEI to help them become better student leaders and really represent their students. We were also heavily involved with the Prop 16 campaign, although unfortunately did not pass. A lot of that work was led by students all across the state of California, and we were really a proud partner of that. And of course, the last piece of this work is today, today's town hall, that we wanted to put together to really reaffirm what is a collective commitment to DEI work, to redefine what exactly is, should be our American values, and to really get all our colleges on board with that and to follow along with us.
Thank you so much, VP Squire, and thank you to all the student leaders out there that are really leading that charge. I'm going to go to past President Stanskus.
Good morning, Stephen. Thank you for inviting the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges to participate. And I wanted to start by saying, there, in my mind, there is no more powerful alliance to be had than when the students and the faculty speak together. And that is a voice that is heard throughout the state, through our system, as the representatives of the shared governance processes. So I really appreciate the students' call to action and how I see that completely aligning with where our entire system is moving forward and the Academic Senate. I'll start by saying, what our organization is doing is that this has been a longstanding goal of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. When we moved offices, we found a binder with resolutions from before, when, before I was born. In 1971, we recommended to the Board of Governors that there was a concern about the racial and gender proportion of the faculty in the system as being not representative of our students in 1971. And so since that time, this has been an issue for the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. In 2018, we launched a campaign to talk to all the other organizations and the chancellor's office about advancing this issue to the forefront and talking about this issue to make real and positive changes. We co-led the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Work Group, the initial iteration called for by the Board of Governors in 2019, that generated the 68 recommendations to implement for the system around that. Clearly, what we're doing is we continue to collaborate with other system partners as much as we can to have a unified voice moving forward. We have made live a Canvas module shell about hiring processes for faculty that is available for use to improve our ability to hire the diverse faculty that are, that should be in our system now. We focus on professional development, leadership development, and particularly infusing anti-racism and decolonization throughout our curriculum. And that is the work that we are moving forward right now. So thank you again for inviting us.
And thank you again for responding to that call. So thank you for giving us all a brief introduction as to what your organization is doing. But now I kind of want to shift the focus and really ask, why is this work so important to you personally? And why is this work such a driving force behind our students' academic success? So I'll pass it back to President Gray.
So for me personally, Chancellor Oakley actually alluded to it briefly, and it sounds like a cliche, but students are our future. I'm 62 years old, so, you know, best case, I'm three quarters, let's see, two-thirds through my expected lifespan, if I'm lucky, right? So, and my daughter is half my age. We need leaders to be educated in order to do their best job. I think we've seen some examples of what happens when uneducated leaders take control. So, and our state is a majority people of color, or at least not, not a majority white people. And understanding that, for some time, I've been concerned about the racial equity outcome gap for, for students of color. And what, what that means to our state, to the literal functioning of our state, if a large proportion of our citizens are not completing college, are not, are not ready to take over the leadership after our group ages out. It's, it's a recipe for disaster. It's, it's not a sustainable way to, to run a state or a world, and it needs to be fixed. So even if I didn't have the moral concerns about fairness and just what's right to do, and once I realized the role that people of my type have taken in helping, in holding others back, even if I wasn't motivated by the, the inherent injustice of that, I would have to be motivated by practicality that we, we need the strength and creativity and, and abilities of all of, all the members of our state and our nation. And it's up to the community college system in particular to provide those opportunities for, for learning and growth. And if we, if we don't do that well enough for an enormous segment of our, of our students, we have to do better. So that's what it means to me.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, President Gray. How about you, President Lester?
Well, first of all, I neglected to give a shout out to my AS officers. So Taylor Carpenter, Com Hen, nice to see you here today. So Mesa College in the hoes. So just want to say that, because now I gotta be able to show my face on campus. So, you know, I grew up in a family for whom social justice was a core tenet. And so I was often challenged by always trying to, to tell people when I thought things were unfair. And being in that same age range that Adrian described, it's been a long road. Next year, I will be celebrating my 40th year in community colleges. And yes, I did start as a grad student in my master's program at a young age, as an intern coming out into community colleges, never imagining this would be my career. But honestly, if you are a community college professional and you are not committed to racial equity, then you're not committed to the success of the students of our system. Because this is who we are. And when I'm asked by students or people in other situations, like, "How do you keep equity at the forefront?", my answer is, "How, how could you let it be behind you?" It is very clear from the data that we use, from the, from what we hear from our students, our faculty, our classified professionals, our administrators, that this is the work of our time. We have gone, as they like to say, from a movement to a movement. And we cannot waste this time. We must be vigilant. And so for me personally, it's in alignment with the way that I've always been raised and the work that I've already done. My early career was working with students with disabilities. And so that idea around how you design learning environments for students has always been a very great interest of mine. And so when you look at where we are from an equity perspective, we still have gaps. Things like AB 705 have been fantastic gap closers around equity. ADTs and providing more streamlined kinds of pathways to our, to our CSUs has been fantastic. But we can't take our foot off the gas here, right? We have to keep moving forward. And I would say that, you know, we talk about being data-driven. I think we need to be data-informed. Data informs the work we do. Our hearts and minds are put to work so that we can move forward with it. So, you know, that's, that's my, my, my personal thing. But I would just say, in terms of academic success, if you're a follower of Estella Benzamone, which I am, you know, if you do not focus on race, if you do not focus on historically minoritized populations, then we will continue to have the same system that we've had all the way along. So we need to be able to just simply focus and not be apologetic. People ask, "Why race?", I have an elevator speech I'm happy to give. But at the end of the day, this is our work, and we need to just stay dedicated to it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lester. That's great. And maybe one day, we'll hear that elevator speech. VP Squire, how about the students?
Yeah, I mean, this work is, is everything to students. Recognizing the need for diversity, equity, and inclusion, in my opinion, is really the difference between our students of color and students of all different backgrounds getting a good education versus getting an invaluable one that helps us connect with our identities and intersectionality as individuals, and really defines the way that we shape the world and leave our mark on it. Recognizing this affects the way that we have interactions with professors and peers in the classroom every Recognizing this affects the way that we have interactions with professors and peers in the classroom every day. This is an everyday reality for us. It affects those members of admin, faculty, and counseling that our students choose to talk to and feel comfortable going to for help. It also affects how valuable students believe their perspectives are and ultimately how successful they are. For me personally, that struggle has been in never having a Latinx instructor before. Never in my K through 12 or college education yet have I had someone that looks like me. And as a student looking to become an educator, you know, I've, I've never actually been able to envision myself in a position like that. And students really need that. And so I think until every student can envision themselves being what they want to be, whether that be an engineer, an educator, whatever profession or pathway, our work isn't done. I also have a mother who's a community college student, who's an older student and had to actually take a break from taking classes a semester and late dropped her classes because she no longer has me around to walk her through what has become an array of obstacles, learning in an online environment and also in a, in a pandemic. And so until people like her can, you know, independently have all the tools to be successful and all the technological support as an older student, our work is still not done. And the same, the same can be said of our diverse, other diverse student populations, right? And so our disabled students are able to access their classrooms and feel included in the campus culture. Our work isn't done. And so our students of color can see their histories, inheritages, integrated in curriculum. And then the faculty and admin, they see teaching on their campus, our work isn't done. And toward undocumented students can say they have a home on campus, our work isn't done. And so the stats, the stats reflect this, right? These are disproportionately impacted groups that are not graduating and transferring. And until these realities change, our work will never be truly done. But that is even more reason to put it at the forefront, right? Not less.
That was beautifully said, VP Squire. Thank you so much. And past president Stanskus?
Stephen, this is a complicated question, and I have like two or three different answers. And I don't know that you'll let me talk about all of them. So the, the generic answer asking a faculty member about why this work is important is twofold. And that is, number one, faculty wants students to succeed. Nobody got into this business because they want to fail people. We want people to be successful. We want to see them achieve their dreams. Otherwise, we wouldn't work in the California Community Colleges. And the other part of that is, we work in a system that was last majorly overhauled in 1960 as the master plan. We are institutions, many of whom are 50, almost 100 years old in places, and all institutions reflect the biases at the time of their construction. We are not 1960 California or 1920 California, and we don't want to be. And our students and our faculty and our boards and our classified staff need to be empowered to understand that decisions were made at that time and that those decisions can be changed, which is something that is not widely known. Many people believe things are the way they are and that's how they have to be. And they don't understand that somebody made a choice to make it that way. And, you know, the 1960 document that was adopted by California was very progressive for its time. And looking at it from a 2020 lens, it's pretty darn racist and sexist in what it's, what it's putting forward. And we are not that California anymore. In terms of what motivates me personally, you know, I came of age in a time as a gay man, at a time when my value as an individual was up for debate in the public sphere. And what was an appropriate course of action for me to take in terms of a career or a pathway to a family was unsettled. I grew up on the east, east coast in Virginia. And that is not the same as knowing what it's like to be black in this country. It's not the same as knowing what it's like to be Latinx. But I do know what that feels like. And I can have empathy for what our students are feeling when their families aren't supporting them going to school, when they are having a difficult time figuring out where they're going to eat and go to school, because I've had experiences that are like that. And I also know what it's like to engage in a discipline that I had professors tell me. You know, I, they were ashamed that I was earning a degree in science because that's not for people like me. I also have two children that I adopted eight years ago who are Latinx. And I don't want them to have those experiences simply because of something that they cannot change. No one should be treated that way for things about themselves that are immutable. And so that really drives me to engage in this work as fiercely as possible. Thanks for giving me two answer times.
Past president Stanskus, and thank you for really sharing your personal perspective on that issue and your personal story. And that's a lot more powerful. So now I have another question for you, and this one really is, is, all right, we've talked about what you're doing. And we've, we've talked about how personal this is to you, but, but what advice would you give? We have so many faculty, administrators, staffers, staff on this call and others. And they, they want to start this work, right, on their campus. They want to make it a priority, but they might not know where to start. So what, what advice would you give them? And back to you, President Gray.
I would say, start with where you are and where your area of control is. Whatever job you, whatever function you're in at a college or in a district, you have a certain span of, of control. And look at that first and think about what are the ways that may be hindering particularly students of color? What are the processes and procedures that seem very normal, that have been in place for a long time, that everybody has sort of just acquiesced with and not questioned? And, and start questioning those. Also, look for like-minded folks in your organization. There will definitely be some. No matter what the culture of your organization is, there will be people who are concerned about the same things. They may be members of an academic senate or a classified senate. Wherever you work, you can plug in there and, and have discussions about this issue and, and be courageous and bring it up. You can talk to students and get involved in their, you know, sit in on their club meetings or their, or their student senate meetings and, and, and hear more from them. You can start educating yourself. There's so much wonderful books. And if you don't want to read a whole book, you can, you can look at a TED Talk or a, or a video from many wonderful educators on this, on the subject of racial equity and particularly about achieving racial equity in education. So prepare yourself to, to be informed and, and then talk about it. Talk about it to others. Make it an issue that you won't let go. Be brave to ask questions and to encourage others to ask questions because we can't wait for, for some of these initiatives to just come down from on high. In fact, a better way for diversity, equity, and inclusion to be implemented and integrated throughout a system is for it to bubble up at the level of each individual person who is participating in that college. That's, that's the best way, and you can be the beginning of that.
Thank you, President Gray. President Lester, I'll, I'll pass it off to you.
Great, thank you. I think all of those things that Adrian just said, I'll just, I'll build on those. I think as the college president, it's my job to create space. It is my job to create the conditions so that people can look at our institutional challenges and challenge them. I would say students have just an incredibly powerful voice on our campuses. And when students build coalitions and as a CEO or, you know, director of student affairs or whomever it is that's working with our students, help them to develop the skills to be coalition builders, then believe me, leaders listen. It is going to be a rare occurrence where a group of students comes forward with some ideas around how they think we could improve our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. And I would somehow ignore that. It just would not happen. So I think coalition building is big. You know, we've, we've talked a lot for a long time about being student-centered. And I think the challenge with being, saying we're student-centered is it puts the onus on the student to perform for us. And what we need to do as institutions is create situations so that our students are not doing the performative nature of their poverty or of their race or whatever, or their orientation, whatever that might be. It's not the student's job to prove to us that they need us. We should know that. We should be listening and we should be in partnership with our students around that. And that's looking for things like creating spaces on campus for affinity spaces. And, and, you know, and it goes from there. If I were to recommend something for people to read, which I love to do, and I'll put a plug in for Equity Chat that happens every Wednesday at 5 o'clock with my friend Keith Curry and I, The Equity Avengers, we do an Equity Talk. Equity Talk to Equity Walk by Estella Bensimon is really a fantastic, fairly short read that will give you some really tangible ideas about how you can move this work to the forefront. We have to stop yakking about it, you know, equity, 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 and actually doing it. And so Equity Talk to Equity Walk is really key. But I would say student coalitions are key. Coalitions of the willing are key, you know, find the choir, add a few more voices, add a few more voices from there. And then I would just put a plug in, excuse me, professional development. Really key that we create space and time on our campuses so that people can learn. If people are not very far along on their journey to cultural competence and we indict them for that, they will stay right where they are. They will pull away and they will simply teach their courses or treat students or lead in ways that are not helpful to our students. So let's call people into us. Let's not indict them for where they are. Let's invite them to go on the journey with us.
I love that. Yeah, let's, let's invite them in. Stop yakking about it. Let's do it. VP Squire?
Yeah, thank you. Just to add on to Pam's point, I think from the student perspective, there's definitely a difference between seeing campuses say they're going to do a work and make a commitment to doing the work and then actually doing the work, right? I think I see a lot of times in my experience as student leader, there will be colleges that, you know, adopt DEI statements saying we affirm our commitment, but then it kind of just drops off there. And once they've affirmed that commitment, then it's like, they don't really know where to go from there. And so, you know, statements, those kinds of statements don't mean much if you're not constantly being critical and making this work a priority. For students, we believe, we live the reality of a lack of DEI work every day. And so I think we should be really making this an everyday priority. And I see a lot of people in the chat asking, you know, how, how can you be involved? And my answer is to really start reassessing how you live your life every day, whether you're a student, faculty member, admin member. I think it really starts by asking ourselves those critical questions. Is our history, history curriculum moving away from Eurocentric? Not just in history, but all pathways, right? Are we using textbooks that are from diverse authors? Are there students on their hiring committees? Are students aware of grievance processes? All those things are pivotal to student success. And these questions vary for everyone, but everyone still has a role in this work. As a faculty member, there are questions you need to ask about the way your classes and curriculum are structured. As an admin member, you need to ask if we have support services in place to help support students of color, students of all different backgrounds. And so I think that's really where this work starts for colleges and also where it should be constantly reevaluated by every single person involved. And also, if you don't know where to start, maybe you don't know what our students might need. We have an anti-racism action plan for that, right? So I think that would be a great place to start.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a great place to start, right, Catherine? Past president Stanskus?
So, so we're asking where to, what advice we would give. And we actually issued advice to academic senates, to, to the local academic senates on June 1st of this year, 2020. And it was about the same time that the chancellor issued his call to action for the system. And it was nice that those two things actually say a lot of the same things. But I will tell you what we said to local academic senates. And the first one is, make an agenda that includes a discussion item about anti-racism, no hate institutions. You can just start there. Start by having a conversation in a shared governance setting. And so that could happen at a bargaining unit meeting. It could happen at a senate meeting for classified staff or the associated student government. Put it on the agenda that we're going to talk about this. This is important. Prioritize culturally responsive curricular redesign with curriculum committees. Acknowledge without assigning blame that the structure of the college houses biases and prejudices of its founding time. Prioritize the evaluation of hiring faculty and the evaluation processes for faculty through an equity lens. Request professional development services from the statewide academic senate about any of these. Evaluate the academic senate and the voices of faculty who are missing in those conversations and seek out ways to empower those voices. And lastly, work with the administration and the students to find constructive ways students can express themselves about structural and historical biases to find solutions for the institution. And so that's what we sent out to local academic senate presidents that seems apropos to most organizations about how to get involved. Everyone at an institution is represented by someone. Students, classified staff, faculty, the administration is represented at the Board of Trustees. Make an agenda item that says we're going to talk about this and be okay with the conversation.
Yeah, that's great. That's, that's awesome. That was some great advice by all of our panelists. And now I really want to, before I even ask my next question, I actually have a, a special student leader with us today. His name is Xavier. He's also an Equity Senator for Questa Colleges Student Body Association. And he's going to give us a scenario that's happening within his own district to really preface our next question. So Xavier, I'd love to hear from you.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to explain what's going on. So once again, my name is Xavier Ortiz. I am a second semester student here at Questa College. My goal is to obtain a degree for transfer in political science and further my education at Cal Poly. The past four months at Questa have been a trying time. Our Board of Trustees attempted to answer the chancellor's call to action by creating an equity, diversity, and inclusion statement. The statement was proposed at the board's September 2nd meeting. During that meeting, the board president, trustee Pete Cisak, took issues with terms such as systemic, institutional, and even wanted to remove black from Black Americans because, quote, "Why would they want to be singled out?" During the meeting, a committee consisting of trustee Cisak, trustee Mary Strobridge, and school president Dr. Jill Sterns agreed to rework the statement. The revised statement was presented at our November board meeting. However, before the statement could be released, trustee Pete Cisak's social media posts were highlighted by our local media. His incendiary posts under the Facebook title of, quote, "Questa College Second District Trustee" were racist, hateful, and above all dismissed and denied the life experiences of Questa Colleges students of color. The board meeting and subsequent special meeting were stacked with members of the community, students, alumni, faculty, and staff calling for his resignation. At the special meeting, trustee Cisak was also asked by his fellow board members to resign. In total, between the two meetings, four hours of public comment was heard with overwhelming consensus pleading for his resignation. Instead, trustee Cisak delivered a statement that reaffirmed his stance that, quote, "All lives matter", end quote, "He does not support anti-racist groups." Trustee Cisak's statement also pointed out that he was one, he was the one being bullied and that this was a leftist attack against his own personal Facebook. and that this was a leftist attack against his own personal Facebook and freedom of speech. As a student and father, the actions of trustee Cisak have been extremely hurtful and disheartening. Moving forward, trustee Cisak needs to do the right thing and step down. Questa College has done and is starting to do amazing work when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Trustee Cisak's continued presence will only discredit and overshadow any work that is being done moving forward. It's not fair to the staff and faculty that I know that are working really hard to help students heal from both this event and all previous events that have happened in our county. Thank you.
Thank you so much Xavier, and thank you for sharing a very personal experience to you and the students over there. And so my next question is really, what advice would we give to students, students like Xavier, students that are really working with the college administration, with trustees, with faculty, with staff, to implement this work? And what advice would you give especially to those who may not be as receptive to this call? So, uh, sorry, President Lester, I'll go to you first.
Thanks Xavier, thank you for sharing that. I think that many of us have had not that experience, but other experiences where our values are challenged so dramatically, and it's not just our values, but it's our existence that is being devalued. And so I thank you for sharing that. I think you saw your community respond. If there were four hours of public comment, that speaks to the power of the folks that are in your area and the, and what they want of Questa College and what they want for you as students. It's, it's hard to make pronouncements around elected officials because they are just that. Elected officials, and I'm sure Adrian probably has some thoughts on this as well. Our trustee Gray has some thoughts on that. It sounds to me like you are doing what you need to do to step forward and, and state what your needs are as a student body. And I would, I would say that you should continue to do that. And I know, I'm sure that President Superintendent Sterns has heard from you and is supporting that as well. Elections do have, do have impact. And so if your community does not support this or does, would not support him going forward, it may take a little bit of time, but, but those kinds of things do resolve themselves. In the face of hatred, which is what that feels like to me, and I, it may feel like that to you as well. I think we step back and we restrategize and we put one foot in front of the other and go at it again. But it is really incumbent upon us as leaders, and I'll just call out white people in this, right? It is, it is an obligation of those of us who hold racial privilege to put our privilege on the line. And so we must do that every day. If my colleague Ed Bush were here, he would say, you know, "I will lose my job over this if I have to." And while none of us would want that to happen because we need equity-minded warriors in this work, it does make us simply redouble and triple our resolve to move hatred to the side and create the conditions that matter for our students. So Xavier, you know, one foot in front of the other, I, I hope that you are supported in this. We all need support right now. This is, and this is the most traumatic time I can remember in my life ever. And so for students that are coming through right now, it must feel like just an assault all of the time. And so I hope you're being taken care of Xavier. You have people around you who are supporting you. But, but keep at it and know that we are all out there with you pushing forward.
So much Dr. Lester, and sorry, I kind of fumbled through that question and I totally skipped over you, President Gray. So I apologize for that, but I'd love to do next.
No, no problem at all. And I loved hearing Dr. Lester's answer. My daughter actually took that same path from Questa College to Cal Poly. She was, enjoyed it there very much. And Xavier, I very much hope that you will, you will be on that path. And it's a, it's a really frustrating story that you tell. And we have to, we have to understand and deal with the fact that there are going to be that type of hard case, unconvincable person in various positions of power throughout our system. Those people exist. Now, what we can do, what students can do is find the people who are champions for DEI and, and work with them. And as that movement grows within your, within your college or your district, others that may have been on the fence or unsure will feel more comfortable joining. But there will always be a certain number of hard cases that, for whatever reason, don't want to go with the flow, right? Don't want to learn, aren't open to these ideas. We'll have to work around them. When possible, we'll have to do what we can to limit their influence and power. And if, if that means having an election campaign that makes clear to the community that this person isn't the best for our students. Participate in that. Absolutely. Local election campaigns are a wonderful venue for students and, and students' voices are very much appreciated by voters. So I would encourage you to take those types of actions. Also be open to have dialogue and hopefully the kind of dialogue that helps people to open up their hearts. And listen to people who may, in, in the beginning, sound irredeemable. And it may just be that they haven't been confronted with these ideas before. I mean, there was a time in my life when I had not been confronted by these ideas before. It may have been easier for me because as a feminist, I can already feel how women are sometimes undervalued. And I was able to transition that feeling into my understanding about how other people with other differences who aren't in the, in the power hierarchy can also feel. Open up that dialogue with people. Students telling their stories is extremely moving. And even someone who thinks they know everything about how the world should work and, and believe in this sort of sense of all lives matter, and if you just treat people equally, everything will be fine. If they hear how that really doesn't work in practice through stories that students tell, they can gradually change their minds. So we'll have to work around some boulders. We'll have to turn some, some, some would-be boulders into allies. But students are a wonderful voice for that. And Boards of Trustees really need your help and participation in our meetings in order to advance that dialogue.
Thank you so much, President Gray. VP Squire, as, as one of the student leaders that represents the voice of students throughout our state, what, what kind of advice would you have for our students here?
Yeah, you know, this town hall was really here to listen to students and reaffirm our commitment to you. So, and I would consider everyone on this panel allies. And like Pam and Adrian have already stated, there are equity champions on your campus as well in the old roles of faculty, staff, and admin. And so similarly to students, I would say find those allies that are receptive and that you know you can count on. But also, you know, as students, your strongest supporters are each other as well. So organize because when students come in numbers, and I've seen that happen many times, it's one of the most powerful things to witness. When students recognize their power and feel empowered to tell their stories, there's really nothing that can surpass that. And from our organization, you know, we have regions available to students to support systems. And that is one of the biggest reasons why we have our regions. Because they're kind of like collective communities that, that are in place for that reason. And really why our organization exists in the first place, to be your voice. And so, and that way, you know, things get done. Things get done when students are being assertive. So also continue to tell your stories as well. Bring them up in every single conversation, every room, every meeting. And make sure that those priorities get passed on because this, this work doesn't stop with you. I think as student leaders, we're only in their terms for a very short period of time. And a lot of this, a lot of the time that work carries, carries over. So make sure that, you know, you continue repeating your story to your allies on your campus who can, who can pass on your priorities and really to anyone on your campus that will listen.
Thank you so much VP Squire. Past President Stanskus.
So I will give you an answer to the question you asked Stephen that you might not find very satisfying, Xavier, for your current situation. But, so this isn't the first time the system has tried to make progress on DEI issues and failed. And stopped because there was a budget downturn, because the voters passed Prop 209, because X, Y, or Z happened. And so from my perspective, it's really important to keep the middle moving in the same direction. You need a majority to move forward to make change. Forcing change and forcing a confrontation is probably not going to succeed. However, if we can get down to the core of nobody works for a community college system, except that they want to help students succeed. If we can name that and coalesce around that, and then we can start having those conversations about, well, how will our students succeed better? What can we do? And we're really doing the implementation of DEI work. But some people, as Adrian said, are not in that place. They're not in that place where you can start with, "I think this is racist." It probably is. But if you start there, they're not going to move forward. And as long as you can keep the middle moving in the right direction, I think that is helpful. You will encounter someone such as Xavier's example. And I'm really sorry that happened to you Xavier. And I wish I could tell you that was an isolated incident that never happens to anyone, but it does. Once in a while, you have some people who I, in my head, I call them dinosaurs. There are some dinosaurs out there. That's not an age thing. It's a, it's an offset thing. And you're never going to change their mind and they're never going to engage and you wait for them to die off. Because that's what happened to the dinosaurs. But you can get the majority moving in the right direction. And by focusing on student success, that we're all here because we want our students to be successful. And that would be my advice.
Thank you, and, and thank you to all of our panelists. Some great advice. I just want to say the SSCCC definitely does offer a lot of support for our students. So please reach out to us, students, on, on issues like Xavier's, where we can come alongside of you and really help out. That's what we're here for. So this has been some great work by our, the organizations that are represented on this, on this panel. Great advice. And the SSCCC has actually finalized a DEI compact, a diversity, equity, and inclusion compact that's going to be taken to each of our system partners. Sorry, my internet cut out right there. The digital divide of our, our students, right? But the DEI compact actually is going to be taken to each of our system partners to solidify our combined effort, right, to ensuring that DEI work doesn't stop. That it's, needs to be front and center right at this time. And we're hearing from this webinar, from everything that has been said today, that we're all committed to this work. So right now I'm going to refer to some of the questions that have been in the chat. Some of the questions that have been in the question and answer forum. And any of our panelists, if you'd like to, to take it away, if not, I might just single you out and, and put you on the spot. I want to go to this first question. The first question is along the lines of, you know, with this, the call to action and things like that, there's, there's been some talk about possibly implementing mandatory diversity, equity, and inclusion training for faculty and even some students. You know, the students have kind of gotten behind this. So implementing this, this mandatory DEI training, do you support it? How do you suggest that we implement it in light of some of the pushback that we've heard? If you don't support it, what do you suggest? And if you don't support it, what do you suggest? I don't think you caught that. Is any of our panelists, panelists would like to, to talk on that one?
You were talking about mandatory training?
They're, they're talking possible mandatory DEI training. Are you in support of that? If not, what do you suggest maybe in its place?
I have some thoughts. Stephen, if it's okay.
Get it for.
So, so there's a couple of things that I would suggest. Number one, when you call something mandatory training, the first thing I think of is you have to go to your slip, trip, and fall training from Human Resources about not falling down on campus and suing the, suing the district. And if that's the mindset, you want people to enter a really honest, vulnerable place about diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's not, that's not helpful at all. What could be helpful, I think, is professional development. I would talk about it in terms of professional development and not training. Even though in many people's heads, those are the same thing. But I don't think anybody would argue that everyone on campus is in need of professional development in a wide range of, of things, including diversity, equity, and inclusion. Some of those conversations that local academic senators are having right now about faculty evaluations are, are difficult because that is part of a bargaining unit. And that is not the purview of the academic senate. But if we wanted to include some sort of training, or we wanted to ask the legislature to intervene in some way, if the students were interested in that, I would suggest language such as, "The legislature finds that as a component of any employee's evaluation, a consideration of diversity, equity, and inclusion be included." Then it would be something that luckily could be bargained and talked about, but would be, would be a recommendation that, hey, you should be talking about this. How does this impact your work? And how are you helping become better at your work through this lens as a way forward? And so that would be my suggestion of how to move that forward, is pushing the professional development component. I don't think anybody thinks that, that all employees don't need professional development. Pushing the EEO regulatory components. The, that could be happening in terms of training, that we're training. But then considering how an evaluation of any employee at the institution should have a component where we are talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion in professional development language. So, I don't know if that answers your question, Stephen, but those are my thoughts about.
Yeah, those are some great thoughts. I see, Dr. Lester, I think you wanted to add something in there.
I do. I, I'll just start by saying I'm more of a carrot person than a stick person. So I will just say that, again, creating that space is what's really important. And I think that you build it into your system. So several years ago, we modified our program review process so that faculty were looking at data in packs of students in a disaggregated way, which means you have to look at how your Latinx students are, are doing. What's the success and retention rates of Black students in your discipline? And if you want to request a new faculty position to be funded, you have to speak to those things in terms of your request. So in essence, as a faculty member, I have to figure out ways that I'm going to educate myself if I'm not already educated in terms of what the impact of diversity would look like in my discipline. So I think you build that into professional development planning. You build that into your convocation and days that, you know, we bring, we've brought a number of folks onto our campus that have really changed the way that our faculty see teaching and learning. Encourage faculty and support them from a, from a remuneration perspective to look at their curriculum. Long Beach has a wonderful cultural competence audit, diversity audit that there, that we learned about this summer at the Curriculum Institute that our institution is taking on right now so that faculty can look at their syllabi and course outlines to see how we might be able to teach our courses differently. I think it's a number of different levels that you push and pull at different times depending Depending on your coalition of the willing and those that you can bring along with you. We have a saying at Mesa called hashtag this Friday. And it's those things that we believe are very important, as Chancellor Oakley talked about. Our students don't have time for us to wait to get it together. And so if there are things that we can do in the immediate, we try to do that. One of the things that we did recently is we weren't excited about the racial outcomes of our scholarship process. And so we partnered up with our. With our foundation board and did an equity audit of who gets scholarships. And we found that there was a racial disparity. And rather than wait a whole nother year, we started immediately looking at our processes. And we changed things like GPA mandated service components. One of our students was saying to us, it's really difficult to volunteer. At a food kitchen, when you're the person in line with your children trying to get assets for your own family. So we looked at those kinds of barriers and immediately it had an impact. So I think you look at those things that you can do right away and grab agency and work at it. And then the other kinds of things, I think you have to build systems so that they change. Knowing that our institutions, as John said earlier, were not built for the students that we're serving today. And so how do we, you know, continue to battle that? But hashtag this Friday, if there's something that needs to be fixed, get on it. Form your coalition and bring it to someone's attention.
I would just add, yes, I agree that attaching the word mandatory to anything makes even people that would enjoy receiving the training. Feel a little bit pressed. And. There's other ways to kind of sneak training in, frankly. If you're having an all-college day, have an equity component there. People show up, wherever people show up, make sure that there's an equity component included. And call that out if you're part of the planning team. Because people can sort of get stealth trained that way and not really have it. Presented to them as this is a requirement you have to, you know, go. It might be a better way for some folks that would be resistant to the more direct approach.
Yes, thank you so much for all those comments on that question. I know actually our student panelist wanted to give a follow-up question after his personal experience. So I'll let Xavier ask that question right now.
Hey, I wanted to first off, thank you guys each for offering some answers and advice to me. I definitely appreciate that. I think one of the biggest questions that comes to my mind is our Equity and Diversity Task Force wasn't even asked to help. With the revision of the statement that they originally came up with and then revised. So I guess the question that I have is how do we deal with the resistance when it starts at the top? And just becomes a stone wall? Because I do see the staff and faculty trying to help us get to where we need to be with DEI. And I just consider consistently keep seeing these stopgaps. And I'll continue to be involved, I'll continue to persevere and do what I gotta do and keep going through my channels. But what advice can I give the staff and faculty that are trying to help me?
Go ahead, past president.
I said this a little bit earlier, but if it can be agendized for the Associated Student Government. As well as the Academic Senate locally, and they can agree on a course of action moving forward. That is a really powerful message to the administration. And so if you have support from your faculty, if you have, if you, if you are at a. If Cuesta has a classified senate, you might go through the classified senate also. But any of those shared governance groups. Amplify exponentially their voice when they can all be on exactly the same page to move forward. So that's where I would start. And be willing to figure out among those organizations, where is the place where we can have that unified voice? Where is that? And like, let's go there together.
If I could, Xavier, the other thing is I don't know how activated your SSCCC region is. But I find the regional approach through student voice is really critical. And if you're together on a DEI statement as a regional student government coalition, if you will. Then each of you can take that to your institutions and there truly is strength in numbers. And you're going to have varied voices in those AS organizations that might have some of the same. Views that are the ones that you're, they're having difficulty with. But you'll have real-time opportunities to help people understand where you're coming from and the impact on students when those statements aren't valued. And so I would, I would say, I feel like we're putting all the work on you here. And it's, believe me, not ever what I would want to see happen is the students have to pull all their own weight. But I would say regionalizing is, you guys have such a strong SSCCC organization right now. And I think the regional approach could be one that's really valuable. I agree with John as well. I know that our student senate sits on our academic senate and gives regular reports of what's happening with the student senate. So that the faculty senate has been involved in that and that our classified professionals do the same thing. So coalition of constituencies on campus, really powerful. And I wouldn't leave out the administrators. You know, they're definitely going to be there with you and just enact that.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I'd like to go in another direction and ask our panelists. What racism do you actually see in our system right now? Is it that we have inequitable outcomes in terms of pass rates, retention, persistence, other traditional measures of success? What do we see and how can we address it? And what advice would you give to the faculty, staff and students? I know the RP group put out even a transfer. A transfer survey, a transfer portal survey for students saying that our Latinx students are the most likely to get to the transfer portal, but they never transfer. And our black and African-American students are actually the least likely to get to the transfer portal. But once they get there, they're the most likely to transfer. And why is that? What do we see in our system and how can we address that?
So one of the most visible metrics, and we've been sharing these charts in various webinars about DEI. Is just looking at the makeup of our system. The trend line for students of color continues to rise. And the other lines for faculty and for. Adjunct faculty also. Some people say, oh, well, classified or adjunct faculty are more diverse. Actually, not really, not statewide anyway, maybe in certain areas. But. All of the administration and faculty and staff statewide in our colleges. Is nowhere near growing at the rate of our students in terms of persons of color. So we have a great imbalance there. And we know that students of color do better. They succeed better, they have more confidence in their abilities when they have leaders and faculty on their campus. That look like them, that aren't the 60 or so percent of white faculties and leaders. So, and not only students of color do better, actually all students, including white students. Do better in a diverse multicultural environment. Which is what our world is, and it's the great preparation for that. So. So we. We know that the outcomes for students are unequal. And we surmise that some of that is because the leadership and the delivery of education on our campuses. Is unequal and we need to fix that.
So I'm happy to jump in. It's our systems, right? It's the systems that are in place that because we are educators, we have come to rely on as easy for us. Right? Whether it's CCC apply and the way that we ask questions when you apply. Or it's federal financial aid, I think we can all agree that. That that whole system could be overhauled tomorrow. And, you know, so there are systems in place. I think where I see racism is in unconscious bias. Where I see racism is for those of us who are well-meaning. Who potentially grew up in the 60s and 70s, thinking of ourselves as sort of liberal and race-conscious. And we are stuck in this world of doing things on behalf of people. In a sort of maternal paternal way, rather than creating spaces to listen to the voices. Of people of color, of our LGBTQ community, of all the communities that have been historically minoritized. And being okay, being uncomfortable in those spaces as we hear that we're not perfect. So I think racism is embedded so much in the DNA of who we are in higher ed. And I'm trying not to get too philosophical here, but you asked the question, and this is my very strong belief. That is so difficult to tackle because it's hearts and minds and practices that are deeply embedded. So again, I think it's, it's looking at those things we can change in the immediate. And not giving up on those systems that we need to change. And I think just as Trustee Gray talked about, it's hiring practices. And I really, you know, John is being very humble when he talks about what the Academic Senate did under his leadership around DEI and hiring a faculty. There is a blue book, a playbook, you know, ready to go kinds of tools that we can use. The last piece is, we are not funded at a rate at community colleges. That would say that we are trying to take the students who have the most educational and academic disadvantage coming into our institutions. So that we can mitigate that. The funding model is upside down. If we could get $25,000 per student and UC got seven or eight. And believe me, I think UCs need to do all that fantastic research that they do. So I'm not talking, I'm not diminishing anybody's system. But until and unless we are funded at a rate that truly helps us serve our students. We are going to continue to knock our heads against equity gaps. We don't give up, we don't stop doing the work, but the system itself is racist. The way that we are funded is inherently racist. And we must continue to couple that together, which is why we set the goals that we did. Racial equity and funding our system are inherently race-based challenges.
Yeah, that was, that was well put. Past President Stanskus, I see you want to add in there?
Can. I thought that Dr. Lester and Dr. Gray did a really nice job talking about it. You asked where we see racism and I think you mean in our systems. But really, all you have to do is look outside. I mean, just look at the news. I mean, if you look at voting requirements in different states. If you look at who goes to prison for the same crime. In different places, if you look at police shootings. If you look at. I'll use a different state. I hesitate to call anyone out in our state. But there's, I have an uncle who works in Virginia. And he works at the. The School for Expelled Children. Okay, so when you get expelled, they will send you to another school. And he has a kindergarten class. Full of African-American boys. What did a five-year-old do to get expelled? And why are they all the same race? I mean, really, if you want to look at examples of where racism exists, it exists. And it is. A constant pressure on everything. So we can't control all of that. We can control a little bit within our system. And there we have metrics of student success. We see a disparity in outcomes for students of color. We see a disparity in. What our applicant pools look like in terms of general population. We see a disparity in who is selected for positions based on the applicant pool. There are ways that we can see that those structures are racist. And Dr. Lester is absolutely right. Why are we funded at, you know, a quarter of the rate of other systems? Well, because community colleges in 1960 were meant for all the other people. Right? I mean, in 1960, that was very progressive. We're going to make college available to everyone. But this group of people, if you are black or you are brown or you are poor, you can go to that one. You go to that one over there as the community college. And we'll fund these other ones at a very different rate. And that is inherently racist system that we are working on. So. I think that, I don't know that that adds to the conversation, but those are my thoughts about it.
Yeah, thank you so much for adding that in. I wanted one final question, and I'm sorry we didn't get to all of them because this is a great conversation. But we have representatives from the students, we have faculty on here, we have our administration, our CEOs, we have our trustees. But where do classified staff come into the picture? And what can they do to help this work and continue this work? And we're talking about professional development, we usually talk faculty professional development. What is there for our classified staff in being allies with us in this whole movement?
Well, I'm fortunate in my district that we do have a classified senate and they worked very closely with our academic senate. To come up with an anti-racism plan and a set of principles. So that was a very natural thing to do in the West Valley College environment. But. One reason and one way that classified staff need to be involved in this is that they are constantly connecting with students in their various roles. And. And there are ways that the systems that they administer also perpetuate racist outcomes. Whether it be financial aid or other types of. Of. Barriers, potential barriers for students, bureaucratic barriers. You know, sometimes a mindset barrier about how many boxes need to be ticked in order for students to be able to. To receive financial aid, things of that nature can stand in the way. So classified employees need to be hand in hand. We know that when we look at the guided pathways model for colleges that we're trying to implement. In order to smooth the way for students toward reaching their goals. That the intention is that it involve everyone. Not just faculty, not just students or administrators, but classified as well. So, and this DEI work must to. So I would say engage with classified staff, invite them. To your student government efforts. And ask them to dialogue with you about how they can take part in implementing DEI. Or how they are already taking part in it.
Good.
If I could just add to that, that was a great answer. From Trustee Gray, the reason there isn't a unified overarching answer for every district or every college. Is that. Every college has to have a CEO. And every college has to have an academic senate. It's written into, you know, Title V. Every college has to have a mechanism for students to express themselves through student government. But there are a variety of ways that colleges have chosen to make the classified voice present. They have to have a classified voice, but it's not always a senate versus a union. There is a law that says, in California Education Code, that says. That the sole representative of the classified staff is the bargaining unit. And so unless the local bargaining unit has ceded some of that authority to a classified senate. Then the board, represented by Dr. Gray, is obligated to listen to the bargaining unit. And so there isn't a uniform answer to give across the system. Because there isn't the same structure everywhere related to the classified voice. because there isn't the same structure everywhere related to the classified voice. That being said, engaging the classified voice in the ways that Dr. Gray recommended are very important. It's just, do you need to go to the bargaining unit? Or do you need to go to the, to the classified senate to do so? And that's something that has to be answered locally.
If, if I could just jump in really briefly, Stephen. I, our classified senate has been in existence for quite a while. And so when you have a mature group of classified professionals who've been doing this work and coalition building for a while, they, they come up with their own sets. They, our group has had a classified equity task force for a couple of years. And when the call to action came this summer, they actually created their own calling into action for classified professionals and created a year-long professional development opportunity for classified, including coming to me for resources, which I am only too perfectly happy to try to find for them so that we can do this work together. It's always wonderful when a group builds a coalition, identifies what its needs are. And I'll just go back to where I started. It's our job to create space. Because if people don't feel included and don't feel like they can come to you with those kinds of asks, then you won't get anywhere. You know, our classified senate came forward and asked for $200 for some, for giving awards out for people who are completing these professional development badges. And I said, $200, I mean, that's nothing, right? So, so we went and looked for a little bit more money so that we could provide a real incentive. So I think it's creating space and, and valuing the input of those groups. We don't, we don't make a move on our campus without the NOAA's arc of representation. Two by two, in all things we do, it is our administrators, classified professionals, faculty, and students that are arm-in-arm doing this work together.
Yeah, that's great. It takes all of us, a unified front, to really get this work done. Our staff, our faculty, our administration, our trustees, and especially our students. So I know we went over a couple of minutes. We could probably have this conversation forever. It could be ongoing. We have a flood of questions here. I'm sorry we didn't get to all of them. But I just want to say thank you to all of our panelists. Trustee Gray, Dr. Lester, Past President Stanskus, VP Squire. Thank you so much for, for being a part of this conversation. And I know the, the audience has, has really enjoyed it. They were flooding the chat with some kudos. And I'd love to see some more audience members. If you could flood some kudos in there for our analysts, that'd be great. But I just want to thank you so much to our audience for joining in. I urge everybody that is on this call to continue the call to action aligned with the work from each of these organizations that, that are spearheading this charge to really make our system the most diverse, equitable, and inclusive one around, right? That's our, that's our goal. So thank you so much to our pants panelists. Thank you to Chancellor Oakley, who is here. We have amazing work ahead, and it's going to continue to, continue to just be worked on. And I wish you all health, happiness, and have a happy holidays. Thank you again.